Check, check. All right. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, staff, and good morning to those in the public on Zoom. I would like to call this meeting to order at 9:00. And can we start with the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, where we stand as one nation, unuttered, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay. Can we get verifications of legal notices?
So there were no legal notices since there are no project items.
Actually, thank you, Trish. The agenda was properly noticed. However, I will request a continuance on the second item, the public hearing. I kind of messed up on that notice to the paper and put the wrong deciding body and actually said the meeting was yesterday. So internally, I am no longer allowed to send in notices unattended. We will make sure that there is proper peer review, so. Yeah.
It happens. All right. So we do have consent agenda, item four, but I don't see that as well. So we will go down to public input. So if anybody wishes to speak, but I see nobody in here, so we're going to say no, but we'll check the Zoom room.
There are nobody, there are nobody, there is nobody in the Zoom room other than us.
Okay. And so we do have a timed item for 903, which it is 903, so we'll begin with the first item.
Thank you. If I could give an introduction, the, as our Assistant Planner Catherine Shafer is about to present to you the details of an annual requirement of a progress report for the housing element. And the state, of course, cares a lot about housing. And when they send out these requirements for the jurisdictions, then they're now, they also hold us accountable to moving forward. So the housing element, as well as many of the other elements in the general plan, are not just plans on a shelf. They're plans that we actively work on integrating and progressing through and accomplishing during that time period. So we now have Assistant Planner Catherine Shafer to present to you the APR.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. So today I'll be presenting our annual progress report. Before I do, I'm going to go ahead and see if I can get some materials up here on the screen. Thanks, Trish. All right. So the annual progress report is that annual requirement from the Department of Housing and Community Development. So this is our 2022 annual progress report covering our permits from the prior year. All right. So the handout that I have up here on the screen, this is a snapshot of our APR report, our annual progress report from last year. So I'm just going to go down through each of these categories and explain a little bit about these numbers. All right. So in total, the county has issued building permits for 18 single-family residences, 18 manufactured residences, seven accessory dwelling units, and one multifamily apartment complex. All right. So building permits issued by affordability. So the state has guidelines on whether or not these, these housing permit applications are considered to be very low, low, moderate, or above moderate. There is a calculator that we're able to use to determine this, and I do have more details on that if we want to get into that later. But with the state's guidelines, we have 69 deed-restricted low-income units. That's the Kelseyville Terrace Apartments that we recently had the building permit for. We have nine non-deed-restricted moderate units that were constructed, and then 31 above-moderate income units. These are mostly the single-family dwelling units, manufactured homes, and also accessory dwelling units.
Can I interrupt?
Yeah.
Can you just tell me what deed-restricted and non-deed-restricted means? Does that have to do with lending?
Yeah. So deed-restricted means that there is an income cap about what can be rented out, and so that usually is with the project for a certain number of years. Okay. So the next one is units by structure type. As you can see here, we have some acronyms, so let me just briefly explain those. Single-family attached and single-family detached. In the County of Lake, we mostly have single-family detached homes, and these are your typical single-family dwelling units that you see here. Single-family attached would be homes that would share a wall with each other. Two-to-four would be a complex that has two-to-four dwelling units in it. So this is not rooms. These are actually dwelling units in a complex. Five-plus would be more than five. And then an ADU is an accessory dwelling unit. And then manufactured home, that is the MH designation. Okay. So housing applications summary. We have received 45 housing applications. The number of proposed units in all these applications are 152. Most of that number is the Kelseyville Terrace Apartments. So each of those apartments in there, each of those 69, those are one unit each. Total housing units approved so far have been 76, so we have much more in the pipeline. For these annual progress reports, you'll often see permits, applications that come into us will be on the form the prior year and the year before as they're submitted, and then eventually they go through the building permit process. Use of SB 35 streamlining provisions. SB 35 is a law that helps to streamline projects through. We haven't had any applications for that yet, although that is still a possibility for our applicants.
Not to interrupt, what is your typical timeline from permitting to completion occupied?
As a planner, I'd have to say that depends on the project.
Sure.
So most of these are building permits, and I can't quite give a timeline for building permit processing. That's not my specialty. But I know for planning entitlements, it can take anywhere from, I don't know, six years to several. It depends on the, on the project.
Okay.
And Catherine?
Yes.
Do these numbers, is there a critical mass that the state wants to see in terms of these numbers? And would these numbers you're presenting to us satisfy what the state is looking for?
Yeah, that, great question. So we do have our regional housing needs allocation, and so that is a number that is in the chart. I believe we're going to be getting to that if we haven't.
Oh, I'm jumping ahead.
No. So that is a part of why we do these annual progress reports every year, to see our progress in meeting those numbers. And so for us, that is an ongoing process, as it is for many other counties, to try and meet that need. So the county creates structures and programs in order to provide housing for the county. And so that's the whole goal of the APR. As far as the complete analysis of whether we've met those goals or not, I think that would be another conversation, a more in-depth one. Um, all right. Oh, sorry. All right. So I'm going to go down to the next page. All right. So the other document that I have for you to see, this is our housing element implementation. We have different programs that are identified in our six-cycle housing element that is currently up online for viewing. We have these programs that we've designed with stakeholders, with the community. This is what we want to see for the County of Lake. And so every year in the annual progress report, we're asked to give a snapshot of how we're doing with these goals. So we're right at the beginning of our new housing element cycle. It's from 2019 to 2027. So a lot of these programs at this point are either ongoing or in progress. And as you look through the chart here, we are going to see a lot of that as we are consistently working on these goals. I'll pick out some highlights unless you want me to go through each of these. Okay. All right. So our first program is the Community Development Department shall regularly review its permit procedures to adjust the cost and time of processing of permits. So this would go in tandem with something like SB 35, where we take a look at project streamlining. That is specifically for certain types of project to get streamlined, but we're always looking at the time it takes for somebody to get a permit. We did just update our in-house fees. So that is something that we have up to date at this time.
As more of a developer incentive, did they go up? Did they go down? What kind of fluctuation are we talking about?
I don't know. I'm not quite sure with that question. I can get more information for you, though. But yeah, that's, that's something I will take a look at.
Sure.
All right. The next one, the Community Development Department shall continue to hold pre-application conferences with developers to assist in identifying suitable sites and understanding permit procedures. The department shall encourage pre-hearing conferences between developers and the residents of the area where new large-scale housing projects are proposed. So this would be something where we have developers come up either to our window or to call in, and then we would provide information about the density bonuses and also the incentives that we have. So we do keep those on hand. And like I said, every project is going to be a little different. So the resources that we provide, we usually look at the project and we try and tailor it to that project.
Is there anyone actively soliciting developers and builders and people to come and build community or state-funded subsidized projects or anything like that? Or you're, are we expecting them to just walk through the door and say, hey, we have a project, let's greenlight it?
Yeah. So that's a, that is a good question and one that I had myself when I was looking at the data. For most of these projects, sorry, most of these implementation procedures, it is a team effort between the Community Development Department and other departments in the County of Lake. And even though we don't, we, the Community Development Department, don't do that outreach, there is another department that does, and I can come back with that because I have a list of that in my packet, too.
Okay.
I can also add just a little bit to that. The administration, the administrative office has recently hired a deputy CAO for housing. Or no, actually, economic development. We're working on, or they are working on hiring someone for housing. And so that would be the staff resources.
Kind of tie it into it, yeah.
Exactly. So that we can be less reactive but more proactive.
I've kind of watched that on the Board of Supervisors meeting when they, you know, acknowledged that they were going to be looking for someone to help out with grant writing and housing as well. Okay.
I brought a, I brought a lot of resources.
Oh, look what I just got myself into.
So if we have questions, I can, I can look them up.
Oh, yeah. And we can, yeah. Not a problem. Thank you, Catherine.
Yeah. All right. So the third one here, by the way, there are 75, so I won't go through all of them. But I'll look here and see the ones that might interest you the most.
Sure.
Okay. H here.
If you're skipping over page three, this is very minor, but there's a typo in the HE seven box. Annually should have two Ls. I know that sounds picky, but it has to be an editor.
Got it. Yes, thank you.
Once an editor, always an editor, right?
Yeah, I will fix that before we submit that to the Housing and Community Development Department. All right. I do want to highlight AT 10. So I'm going to go over to number 10 here. Okay. So the county shall publicize the list of vacant multifamily sites on the county's website to potential developers as part of an outreach campaign. The county shall review and update the list annually. So this is something that you can find in our housing element. So if you go to our list of vacant sites, if developers do want to see which sites are available in the county, we do keep that list with full pictures in our housing element. So we do have that, and as more sites come up over the next couple of years, our next housing element cycle is in 2027, we will update that at that time. So that one is there.
Those are typically lots that are going to be zoned R2, high-density residential.
Yeah, mostly R3.
Okay.
I have a quick question for you, Catherine.
Yeah, go ahead.
You just happened to know.
Sure.
Is there anything in here about the paper subdivisions that we have throughout the county that?
I think so. I think so. And if we come to one, I'll, I'll touch on that one, too.
If I could also add just a little bit in there, there is a standalone, it's not called the paper subdivision, but it is the paper subdivision management plan that was approved by the board a number of years ago. And that does dictate how we will treat a lot of those parcels. For those of you who are not familiar with paper parcels, these are subdivisions that were created by deed in the 30s and 40s and 50s. The roads may have been bladed, but there was no surveying done. There's never been any infrastructure taken to these parcels. A lot of them are on very steep slopes with unstable soils. Some of the parcels have actually disappeared because they've eroded into the lake. So it, that is the reason why we have the substandard older subdivision overlay on a lot of those parcels, because there are additional requirements that would be required in order to build on those parcels. Those would include creating a road, like actually building the road, and it has to be up to current standards so that fire trucks can come and save your house, as well as a number of other requirements. So.
So those are like paper lots?
Exactly.
Okay.
And when you say paper lots, it's because they exist sort of in paper only.
Right.
They're real. They're out there.
Sure.
Yeah, people own them, but, but owning and actually developing are two very different things in this instance.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's some way we could, you know, what's the highest best use? Kind of think about, how do we maybe even eliminate those or?
The board has considered a number of options in that plan. One is sort of collecting and clustering parcels near infrastructure so that it would just be a short extension rather than a huge infrastructure project, and then merging those and selling them as developable lots. There are other options for, I think, gosh, it was a while ago, but, but accepting them into county ownership for development of parks and trails.
Sure.
Things like that. So there are a number of options. And actually, it's interesting that you bring up that question right now because the...
There's a parks thing going on, isn't there?
Not only is there a parks thing going on, but the Treasurer or Tax Collector's Office is trying to get caught up on all the tax defaulted parcels. A huge number of these paper parcels are tax defaulted, some more than 20 years. And the board has been hesitant. The board would prefer that they not just be resold all the time, because people buy them online thinking they're getting this really great deal, and they come out here and they, you know, they can't even get to their parcel. So, so they have recently sent us a large number, maybe 100, maybe, of these paper parcels that the planning team is going to work on feedback for the Treasurer or Tax Collector's Office. So we, information technology is creating a map so that at one of our next planning meetings, we can start taking a look at where are these parcels and how can, you know, what are the options for ownership and clustering and resale and things like that? So it's kind of fun because it's the first time that we've really been able to do that. So we're looking forward, I, I'm looking forward to this exercise, so.
That's neat. Yeah. Or maybe like a tax credit or something that could work for the county where we could allocate some of those paper lots. Yeah, because.
I was wondering if we could maybe create a conservancy or some kind of entity that would own them and then manage it or something.
That is another option. Years ago, we tried to get the land trust to take it on, and they didn't want to touch you with a 10-foot pole. But understandably, because as you accept ownership, you also accept liability.
Liability. Mm-hmm. And maintenance and all the other things.
Yes, I'll jump off my soapbox now. Thank you. Let Catherine continue.
So we're going to go ahead and go to number 19, so Housing Element Program 19. This goes to Commissioner Field's question about the expiration of the affordability. So the county does monitor the expiration of our projects. So for example, the Kelseyville Terrace Apartments that were just permitted, I believe they have an expiration of 55 years. So most of these are very long-term.
Mm-hmm.
So we, we have them on our radar. So that's an ongoing.
I had a question on HE 18.
Yeah.
What is the mobile home replacement program?
So the mobile home replacement program, I believe that is the Department of Social Services. That, we haven't, as far as I know, had much activity in that program, but as far as what that program is, I'd have to check in with the Department of Social Services a little bit more.
But does it have to do with like replacing these old mobile homes with new ones or just removing them completely and not allowing them anymore?
I, I would, I would think that that would be the case, maybe both of those, but I would have to check on that a little bit more.
Thank you.
So for most of this data, it's just a collection of what we've done with the, with the activities there. These housing element implementation programs, they come from all of our departments collectively in the County of Lake. So some of our departments have more of a specialty with these implementation programs than others. So I'll get back to you on that one, though.
Just because, or the reason I just wanted to ask is because a lot of, like, farmworkers and they live in mobile homes. So I was, my question was just what, you know, what that program did.
Yeah.
Yeah, or if like if they might help with the cost of removing or some other type of incentive to rebuild or get them up to code, something like that. Okay, cool.
Yeah, there's a lot of eyesores out there.
Agreed.
And let me just pull out a resource here, see if I can answer more of that while we're here. In our housing element, which is up online, this is our six-cycle housing element. So if you go under our planning page on our website, we can find this either in the housing element or we can find this in chapter four of our general plan. And more detail can be provided, I believe, in, I think it's section 1.1, and it'll say a little bit more about these programs and also who oversees them. All right. So as we're going on here.
Catherine?
Yeah.
I have a question about page eight.
Sure.
The universal design standards.
Yes.
I've never heard that term come up when we're looking at certain kinds of projects or applications, but I wonder if in the course of updating community plans, like the Middletown Area Plan, for example, is that an issue that needs to apply as those are updated?
It's a really good opportunity for each community to update their design guidelines. I know Middletown has one of our most detailed ones in the plans.
The most recent.
Yes. This is a little different in that they're, they're now more called objective design and development standards. And the purpose or the benefit of the development of those, which is separate from the area plan, because this would be encouraged in the general plan and then implemented through zoning code text amendment, and the benefit of that is for multifamily residential projects, which could be anything from duplex on up, so long as they satisfy the established objective design and development standard criteria, they're ministerial, rather than having to go through a discretionary permit for design standards and, and use permit, which equates to a lot of time and a lot of money for developers, and it becomes more prohibitive. It becomes sort of an obstacle for development. So that's the, the goal and the purpose of those. We thought about working on those right now, because Catherine is actually working on a housing-related zoning code update, but we've decided at this point, we're going for the low-hanging fruit. We're just doing the zoning ordinance that'll bring us into compliance with a number of state laws that have been enacted. But it is still on our radar as we, as we start going through these area plans and then the general plan itself, we'll be in a much better position to take on that project after that.
Thanks.
That was the next one that I was going to highlight as well. So this is AT 38. So the county shall consider adopting amendments to the zoning ordinance that would allow additional residential developers in community commercial areas where appropriate services are available. This is not our only zoning ordinance update within the HE implementation programs. There are several, and they are meant to expand housing. So this is one that we have a lot of applications come in for at the Community Development Department. I should say, not as so much applications as questions. So there is a lot of interest in expanding residential units into commercial areas. So that is something that we're looking at with the new legislation coming out. Moving on to the next page here. So as you can see, our HE implementation program 45 has several parts to it, so it is broken down into three different categories. So this is about water and sewer expansion, hosting annual meetings. So this is taking a look at our water and sewer and what we can support throughout our community. Now, as you can imagine, this is a, in tandem with lots of different departments across the county. So many of these are going to be either ongoing, in progress, as we continually look to expand our services and what our infrastructure can hold. I think I want to highlight one that has been completed. So the county shall continue to, this is, by the way, HE 51 on page 14. So the county shall allow 35% density bonuses for low and very low-income affordable housing projects, consistent with the government code, for the MDR and HDR designated sites. So that would be medium-density residential and high-density residential. So this is that Permit Streamlining Act that I was talking about before, that SB 35. So we do have that in place in case we have developers that would like to utilize that. So we have created that structure.
And actually, I can add to that. Collier Avenue did take advantage of the density bonus. So there's a recent example.
And Collier Avenue was on our 2021 annual progress report, so we were able to give the state those numbers.
Catherine, in HE 48, it says, it says should, not shall, but the county should create a housing task force. Has that task force been created?
I think, this is 48. So I do have a brief overview of how we did address this back in 2020. I know that this is something that we have had on our radar since then, but I'll just give you the overview that we had at the time. Other than the Continuum of Care Task Force, which primarily addresses the homeless population, no other housing organization has been created to actively address affordable housing in the community. So this is one, if you see an incomplete on here, it's something that we are actively trying to pursue. Thank you for that question.
Would that kind of fall into, Director Turner, would that kind of fall into what they're doing at the Board of Supervisors level with trying to get a position created for someone who's going to be a grant writer and actually run the housing department or like that part of things, as far as it being incomplete and not having an actual task force? Is that the beginning stages of getting a team put together?
That's a great question. I don't recall seeing that on the job description that was posted. So I, I don't really know. It sounds like a great idea. One thing also important to note is that the, the board also does sit as the Board of Directors of the Housing Commission as well.
Okay.
And so that, that continues to focus on housing, not so much in a, in a policy direction way, but rather implementation of existing programs.
Okay.
All right. So the next thing that we'll highlight here is going to be on the next page, 15. This is 52. So this is one of those examples of multi-departmental collaboration. So the county will work directly with service providers of the developmentally disabled, such as the Redwood Coastal Regional Center, to identify the number of residents who are developmentally disabled. The county shall also assess housing currently being utilized by those with developmental disabilities. So this is one that the Department of Social Services mainly spearheads, but it once again is a collaborative process, and that's an ongoing project.
And was, some of the units that are going on in the Collier project are for behavioral health or something like that, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Does that count with the 69 units? No, that's different. That was, that would be the Kelseyville Terrace?
Yeah, Kelseyville Terrace. Yeah, Kelseyville Terrace was the 69. Um, I did not bring the 2021 APR with me.
Sure.
But we, we do have that.
Okay.
So I can, I can give.
I appreciate your patience, Catherine.
No, it's okay.
I have like a zillion questions. Okay.
As we get higher here in the numbers, um, especially as we get to the 70s, uh, these are implementation programs that have been, uh, modified recently in 2020. Um, and most of these pertain to zoning ordinance changes to facilitate that, the new housing laws coming in. So if you want to go ahead and take a look at Page 17 here. So some of these changes include, um, and this goes to maybe, uh, your question, Commissioner Chavez. Uh, the zoning ordinance shall be amended to accommodate agricultural employee housing of six to 12 units or up to 36 beds in all zone permitted agriculture as a permitted use. So just a more, more options for agricultural employee housing. Um, HE 71, the zoning ordinance shall be amended to allow residential units located on the second story or higher, limited to one dwelling unit per 1,000 square feet of commercial floor area, and subject to the parking requirements, uh, with a minor use permit. So these are all just pretty much structural changes to allow more housing, um, and try and match us with our, uh, new state laws from 2019, 20, 21, and 22. Most of the new housing laws really hit in 2019.
Mm-hmm.
They've been further amended and built upon. Uh, there's a slew of new ones that came out this year as well. All right. Well, that does conclude my presentation. Um, I'd be happy to take any additional questions.
Yeah, I have a question. Um, HE 55, um, the county shall amend the zoning ordinance to reduce minimum home size from 720 square feet to 360 square feet. I remember having a conversation at some point about, go ahead.
Yes, I have an answer for that one. So we have changed that in our zoning ordinance. There's only two articles where we, we've missed it, and it's not in our main zoning ordinance articles. So there are just two slots where, um, I think arti-
Article 10.
Article 10 might be one.
360 square foot.
Okay. Yeah, there's just a, small areas, but we did, um, a big overhaul of the zoning ordinance to address that. So in most of our zoning ordinance articles, that is the case now. 360 square foot is the minimum.
Okay, so we can now start looking at tiny home developments.
I would defer that to my director.
Tiny home is, um, spot on as far as square footage, but it does have additional challenges because, um, in our single-family residential, we do require homes be attached to permanent foundations, um, as well as tiny homes technically count as recreational vehicles, um, as far as the state purview and certification goes. However, that being said, it is part of what we will be looking at in the future as we go through the community visioning processes.
Thanks.
Well, for clustering purposes too, it seems that the tinier homes could be thought of in a different way and can be built on pieces of land that you couldn't build a large multifamily structure on or something.
Well, also they're much quicker to install.
Well, and then I, I kind of go back to, I saw something on the news a couple days ago about, they, they called it transitional housing, you know, where it's not, um, permanent necessarily, but they can stay up to like 18 months and, you know, live in the tiny home structure in like a community type of area, right? And then get into more of a, uh, a permanent housing option.
Yeah, I, my understanding of that, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, is that that's for somebody who's trying to build their home and also live on the property. So it's a temporary, is that?
Uh, transitional housing is defined in the state government code. Um, it is housing that people, uh, special interests or special needs groups can stay in for a certain period of time, um, as opposed to our local zoning permit for a temporary, uh, residence. And that has criteria, one of which is, is, you're allowed to live on the property so long as your infrastructure is in place and you're connected to it and in like an RV while you are building your issued building permit for your dwelling. So.
Whereas I think transitional housing is more like if you were waiting on an apartment complex to be completed and like you're almost on a waiting list, they could provide you with, uh, temporary housing while that's being built and then transition into more of a, a permanent, uh, housing arrangement at that point.
The state has also defined, um, transitional and supportive housing for the purpose of requiring it to be, requiring it to only have the same limitation that a permanent house would have or any other residential permit would have in that zoning district, the purpose of which to, to make it easier, um, to, to kind of overcome the, uh, possible community pushback on having special needs housing.
Mm-hmm.
I just had one more question. Um, I remember hearing at the, um, Planning Commissioners Conference about a law that will be coming into effect next year, I believe, that, um, makes additional, like granny units, uh, legal for any, any project? I mean, I'm not stating it correctly, but.
There is a lot of focus on the accessory dwelling units. We used to call them granny units, but now since we don't require a granny, um, they're ADUs. And so there is continual legislation and interest at the state level to, to make those easier to build. Some of that is reduction in development standards, reduced setbacks, um, things like that. Also not counting towards overall density, um, and things like that. So I wouldn't be surprised if there's yet more. Um, I think this past legislative year, over 2,600 bills were submitted. What, yeah, they just, they're very busy at the state level. And for the last four or five years, maybe, maybe more, maybe six, um, housing has been a primary focus of those. So it's kind of like, it's still a fire hose, all of the state, uh, legislation that comes at the counties, uh, focusing on increasing opportunities for housing.
And is it true, excuse me, that the, that the state law on ADUs, um, supersedes anything else? And I happen to live in an HOA where the board is not particularly complimentary of ADUs and implies that property values can be affected, that kind of thing. But an HOA can't pass a, a measure preventing ADUs.
Correct.
But.
Good to know.
One thing that's interesting, just future reference, um, in our county, we do have, the, there's a, a district that does not allow ADUs, and that's the agricultural district. They allow a single-family residence, but then all additional housing must be directly connected to the ongoing commercial agricultural activity on that parcel.
So no, like labor housing or anything on?
Oh, yeah, you can have labor housing, but it ha, any, any type of additional housing has to be connected directly to supporting ongoing commercial agriculture at that parcel.
Okay.
And the reason for that is because agricultural soils are finite. We only have so much. And we find as you place things on agricultural soils, such as housing, other structures, it's not like they get removed that easy. So you're losing from your overall total of, of arable soil. And so the board and the community were very protective of the agricultural soils when they were doing the ag element, um, with the last general plan update specifically for that. And that's why minimum parcel size are larger in ag and there are housing restrictions. So it'll be interesting to see. So far, the state has not forced ADUs to be allowed in non-residential zone districts. So we still retain some of that local control.
That's interesting.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you, Catherine. Thank you.
Yeah, it was very comprehensive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you for the, uh, presentation. Uh, seeing as our second item, um, was not a, uh-
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If you could call the second item and then staff can request a continuance.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the second item, um, would anybody would like to make a motion?
If, if you could read the title.
Oh, yeah.
For our vast watching audience out there.
Uh, it is a public hearing, consideration of request for recommendations to the Board of Supervisors on draft ordinance amending Chapter Five, Section Five through Six, Article One, Section Five through Six, 6.24, exempt agriculture structures, and adding Chapter Five, Section Five through Six, 6.25, temporary ag structures of the zoning ordinance to the County of Lake in regards to agricultural structures.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, staff does request, due to the insufficient noticing for the public, that this item be continued to your next meeting, April 13th. Um, I don't, we haven't made that agenda, so let's, let's do 905.
To move.
Mr. Chair, I move that we continue Item 23, 2509, um, to a date certain of 4/13/23.
Uh, just for simplification, I'll second that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
And moving on to our seventh item, which is non-timed items. None. Uh, department update?
Thank you. Just have a few things. Um, first, I attended the California County Planning Directors Association meeting last week. I had no idea that such an organization existed until the Mendocino County, uh, Community Development Director, or Planning and Building Services Director, uh, told me and, and explained what a, a great group it is. So it is a great group. It was wonderful. We had maybe 34 counties represented there and all, you know, urban and rural and, and experienced and new and, and it, they have an ongoing, like a listserv or forum that will definitely be a great resource, uh, for me as a baby director. Um, and so one of the interesting things that I heard there that I didn't, I didn't find an appropriate place to insert it in Catherine's presentation, is that there could be a law or a piece of legislation regarding the seventh cycle housing element, which as Catherine said, was, it will be due in 2027. It affects our RENA numbers, the regional housing needs allocation numbers that get passed down from the state. This, this law would require that housing lost through disasters be added right back into the RENA numbers. So in particular counties such as us, yeah, that could really, that's going to be a plot twist on, on how we are, are going to then, uh, modify our housing element to accommodate those.
Is there any like statute of limitations as far, like as far as like how far back you can go? Are we talking Rocky Fire, Valley Fire? Are we talking?
I have no idea yet because I just promptly went into denial.
Zoned out.
But, but yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at that and, and see when it's going to impact us and how we'll, we'll work with it. Um, let's see. Oh, advanced planning. If you remember that really colorful table that, uh, that, that Laura Hall made for us for the general plan and related documents update. Well, there's more. There's more. There are a number of advanced planning or just projects that are under the responsibility of community development that are housed within the local hazard mitigation plan. Three of those documents. One is the emergency route, or emergency evacuation routes plan, um, a resiliency plan, and a climate action plan. What the difference between a resiliency plan and a climate action plan is, I cannot, I cannot answer that right now. Um, so those three, even though they're not on our table, are, are going to be integrated into the timeline. Our, our new chief climate resiliency offer, officer has been actively looking for grant opportunities, um, that will help us to accomplish those goals. Um, but you know, it'd be a great time to actually have the board tell me I could start my own division for advanced planning because, jeez, we're, we're going to be busy. We got a lot of stuff to do. Um, let's see. Oh, just one update on, back to the general plan update, the, the general plan and associated document update. We heard from the state that we did not have to turn in a new housing element by this August, which was of great relief. And so we have amended the RFP to note that and to extend the submission deadline, I think it's to April, April 14th. So we are hopeful that with the removal of that housing element, which a three-month turnaround is just kind of seriously nuts.
Deep.
Yeah. I think that that, um, caused a number of firms to lose interest. And so we're hopeful that, uh, that with that removed from the scope of work, that, um, that people, the other planning firms will take another look. That is all I have for today.
So was that your main takeaway from your meeting was the, um, the RENA?
You know, you know how, like during traumatic events, you kind of like post-stamp, like where you were at that moment?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was kind of, that's kind of what I did.
That was 9/11, huh?
Yeah, 9/11, you know, the, the, the space shuttle blown up. Yeah.
Right.
Not quite at that level, but it's close. Um, no, I think a, a few of the other takeaways were just how real, you know, how the, before I became a community development director, I always looked at this as like, man, that's a job, you know? You gotta be a rock star to do that job. And, but now that I'm in it, I feel like I'm not that, you know? I'm still the first grader looking at the sixth graders.
Oh, you're a rock star. You are.
I don't feel like, I feel tired.
Yeah.
But, um, so just hanging out with this new group of peers of mine, it was so refreshing because they're all real people too.
Right.
So, um, so that in itself, I, I think that sometimes when we're faced with, with growth and, and challenges that are so big, the important first step is we actually get to wrap our heads around kind of what we're doing, you know, like, like running a marathon or something like that. You gotta just sort of see yourself doing it. And so to meet all these other people, um, and to, to talk to them and just really network was extremely valuable to help me kind of wrap my head around this totally cool job that I have.
Yeah, and, and it probably gave you a different, like, I got this. Like, these people are doing it one bite at a time, you know?
Yeah.
But you're, you're in it and you are controlling it. You're in control.
Phew, I'm good at sales, so you know.
Hey.
Sometimes I look a little more controlled.
You could sell ice to an Eskimo, something like that.
I am very fortunate to have such a, an able team.
Yeah.
So our department continues to promote learning and, and they're encouraging each other. And the cohesiveness that I see developing in this group is, is so reassuring because it, we're going to need that organizational internal strength in order to take on a number of the challenges that we're looking at. Oh, and one other nugget that I just learned. In the building division, last year, they completed over, our plans and, our, our building inspectors completed over 4,000 inspections.
Wow.
They are all, all over the county every day. And, and not only do they do the inspections on their, on their list, but they're also noticing other things that we need to follow up, um, with as a department. So there is a lot going on upstairs. That concludes my report.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Um, thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, staff, director. And I call this, uh, meeting adjourned at, uh, 9:50.